Members of the public, welcome to them as well. To our virtual meeting of the Town Council today, Wednesday the 4th of November. Hopefully you have all got access to the agenda review. If you haven't, say so. So by that silence, I assume you have. So Agenda Item 1 is apologies. Have we received any apologies for absence of this meeting?
councillor Orban.
Councillor Orban, okay. That's all. Any declarations of interest? Silence is golden, I'll go move on. Questions from the public? There don't seem to be any questions from the public. They had to be written in prior to the meeting, so I assume there are none, is that correct?
I've not received any chairman.
Right, we move on to minutes of the previous meeting of the 29th of July. Agenda Item 4. Has everybody assiduously read them? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, can I have a proposal and a second please?
Do I not get in?
Who's proposing? Does anybody wish to propose?
I'll propose Chair, I'll propose.
Albin is proposing, is there a second?
I'm seconded.
That's councillor Ara. Thank you very much. We now move on, return the page, to Agenda Item 5. Apprenticeship proposal for RTC, town clerk. It seems to have lost the town clerk. Richard, are you there? Stop clapping councillor Orban. May I ask you, if everybody isn't speaking, including myself, can you mute your microphones please, until you wish to speak, because otherwise we get feedback. Is the town clerk there? Is there anybody there? Town clerk? You're going to introduce Agenda Item 5? Dean, is the town clerk logged off or something?
No, he's showing visible as the participants. Give me one second, I'll just give him a ring. Oh, here he comes.
Hello, I just dropped, yep, yep, yep. It dropped out for some reason, I don't know why.
Okay, right, Agenda Item 5, apprenticeship, Ramsgate Town Council. Over to you, town clerk.
So it's Item 5 now, because I'm getting a bit out of, because I didn't see. Oh, yeah, apprenticeship proposal.
Yes, I said Item 5.
Yeah. Okay. I've written a report on it. We're suggesting, yes, it can be done, of course it can be done. And we've come up with a suggestion on it. There are, we were making suggestion that there probably to be two apprentices. One for the technician side. Oh, hang on. It's not responding. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Richard.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, something's coming up on it. And, hang on, let me find the report again. It's, what we're suggesting is that there would be two, one for the technician side and one for the, and one for the administration. It will mean, obviously, you wanted, kind of like a shadow for Dean, which makes sense, to help with the technical side of things. Managing, well, obviously it'll have to fall to me to overall manage both sides. But I think we would probably, instead of having just one officer being responsible for all of it, for either the admin side or the technician side, there would be a kind of a bit of a sharing out of it, where, because this, otherwise, experience has shown me that having an apprentice is a fairly, is a fairly busy sort of thing to do. It's quite an activity, there will be an awful lot for them to follow. And I don't think it's right that one officer should actually take the entire burden of whatever side it may be, and it needs to be shared out a bit. But apart from that, I think it's certainly doable and we should do it, if it becomes council policy. And I think in the future, it may be our way of recruiting staff, rather than recruiting staff on the open market, which is, you know, always a, that depends on availability. If we've got our own in-house staff, makes things a lot better. So there we are, as I've said, it's a major commitment, and I think the council should care carefully, and the council should decide. But we would back it up and we would support it, we would do it.
Okay, members, the only way I can actually see whether or not you wish to speak is if you actually say, can I speak? And tell me who you are, and I'll write your name down in list order, and then call you in order. So does anybody wish to speak on this particular item? Please say so now.
Me first.
One at a time.
Councillor Orban, please Chair.
Matterson? All right, Albin. Albin? Anyone else?
Councillor Wing.
Wing? Anyone else?
Me, please, Peter.
Is that me, Green?
That is.
And I'll speak as well. Okay, well, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Matterson, Orban, Wing, Green and myself. And there'll be others if they wish to. Councillor Matterson, you're first up, please.
What? Was there a report, Richard, that I should have read? Because I want to ask some questions. Hello?
Yes, there was a report, it's on Agenda Item 5.
Oh, sorry, I must apologize, I haven't read it. How much will it cost us?
Well, that would depend on the level pay that you set. If you're setting it on the minimum wage that they have, then it would be, whatever the current level is at the moment, I'm not sure, I can't remember what it is, but it was certainly, it used to be £2 or £3 per hour. If it'll be a bit more than that now. But if you want to set it at a higher rate, which was done in the past, then it would depend on how you felt it would, how you felt they were, that the rate should be set. I mean, it may be that you feel that, for instance, an administrative job, which is going to be of a fairly technical nature, would require a higher standard of apprentice, the entry level would be higher, and therefore you may want to recruit somebody at a higher wage. Whereas a technician's job, apprentice technician, if you took one of those on, could be done at a low rate.
Okay, and how many technicians have we got at the moment? Because when I'm wandering around town, the six. Where did all that come from? And what do they all do?
Oh, no, we're talking about apprenticeships now, we're not going on to what do the technicians do.
Okay, okay, but why do we need an extra body then? We've already got six.
Right.
No, it's not about that, it's about, I mean, strictly speaking, the council's running perfectly well on the staff it's got. The, I was asked whether we could take on apprentices, whether we could handle apprenticeships, the answer is yes. It's whether you think that we need, in terms of encouraging employment or whatever, any other reasons you might have, it will be social and economic reasons, as opposed to strictly what the council needs to do. And that's how, that's how I saw it, anyway.
Okay, perhaps I need to interject here, before the others come in. Sorry to sort of barge in, to set up, set the picture. But basically, I felt, along with councillor Green, who actually brought this proposal up initially, that we were vulnerable, in case Dean got run over by a number nine bus or something, yeah? In the sense that the technical duties that he carries out are specialized, and that we perhaps needed some cover for him, and to take the workload off of him as well, to allow him free to do more upgraded work. That is a proper apprenticeship. Because of the nature of the particular type of work that Dean does, it would be a proper technical apprenticeship, of computing skills and others, that we could arrange a computer, an apprenticeship for. Our apprentice, inverted commas, technicians, we decided, when we took them on, the youngs, the younger lads, that the apprenticeship wasn't proper for them. They were going to night school, a day school, but the type of nature of work that the apprenticeships were doing there, didn't fit in with the type of work that they were expected to do at Ramsgate Town Council. They were therefore given the opportunity to actually come out of the apprenticeship scheme, and actually become junior technicians. Both of them agreed that that was more appropriate. So it's a couple of surprises to me, not after reading the report, that there's going to be two apprenticeships. I don't think that's actually appropriate. I think we need to discuss one apprenticeship, proper apprenticeship, and that apprenticeship would apply to the type and nature of work that Dean does, to cover him, and also to allow him to move onwards and upwards, up the scale, to do more important and technical work. That's painting the picture. Okay, so members can now go on from there. Councillor Matterson, have you finished, or do you wish to ask further questions?
I just want to say, that solves my issues with the idea. So I agree with what you say. Backup, backup Dean. But we've got apprenticeships.
Councillor, sorry.
I've finished.
Councillor, next on the list?
Yeah, thank you Chair. I was going to say, and you took the words out of my mouth, that I think we only required one, and that that should be support for Dean. Certainly, I am fully supportive of any apprenticeship schemes, because we do need to get our young people back into work. And if we can do that, even just one, then we should fully support that. I would also say, I think we need to give serious consideration, not to the minimum wage, but to a living wage. And that's certainly, that's certainly something that I would support in relation to that, Chair, and I would be willing to put that forward as a motion, to go along with having the one apprenticeship for Dean, with Dean, rather, and set at a living wage. Thank you Chair.
Okay, just to inform you, that all our technicians, junior as well, are currently on the minimum living wage, even though it doesn't really kick in until they're 25. In actual fact, we decided at previous meetings, that they would be appropriate to pay them at that rate anyway. Apprenticeships is different maybe, because this is a proper apprenticeship, depending upon the age of the applicant, and the successful applicant, we can look at a pay scale for that then. 16, it may be not appropriate to pay them £8 odd an hour, which is the, £8.65 I think it is at the moment. Perhaps a little bit less than that would be more appropriate as an apprentice. You can't pay apprentice the same as a technician, a junior technician, in my view. But that can be decided by yourselves, at this meeting, if you wish. Okay, moving on. Councillor Wing.
Hello. Yeah, I think it's a great idea to have apprenticeships. I mean, I taught for 26 years and managed growing our own teachers, that we were obviously in the middle of Barnsley and found it difficult to recruit. So definitely growing your own is a fabulous way to not only get the staff you need, but also support your community. So I'm well up for this. But I think, in the future, can we explore the idea of actually trying to support our homeless with work experience, or possibly part-time job opportunities when we're under pressure? And also young people on work experience? Because we could be a massive force for good. There are two local providers, Liberty Group and KMS, that I work with closely, and we've got workers, both office-based workers and also practical workers outside, and even councillors that could provide our young people with work experience opportunities that might well kick-start them. And I think there's money attached to some of this, I'm prepared to do a bit of investigating for any future, but yeah, definitely up for apprenticeships. I'd have them on a rolling basis, so you might take an apprenticeship for a year, in the hope that you found them an opportunity elsewhere, which is what we did with some of our teachers, because we didn't have job opportunities, but we provided an apprenticeship every year, or teachers' apprenticeships, rather than work apprenticeships. So definitely something that is massively important for us to do, given our employment and social deprivation figures.
Okay, I think we'll have to explore how long this apprenticeship scheme would last, given the appropriate nature of the work that Dean carries out, and the training that would be required to bring the person that we employ up to the particular standard. But I fully appreciate what you're saying. I think we'll leave it with you, to come back at a future date for a different agenda item, about the work experience and other issues you mentioned, under a separate agenda item, councillor Wing, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Green.
Yes Chair, you said more or less what I was intending saying. My initial request was purely concerned with cover for ourselves, as you say, if Dean I am concerned though, because looking after an apprentice is a task in itself, and I understand Dean is already very busy, which is why I suggested that somebody else took on the admin involved in employing an apprentice. And I don't really agree with Richard that it could be shared, I think somebody in authority needs to take responsibility for it, to make sure that they're treated properly.
Well, I think this is a discussion that perhaps Richard, as the notional chief executive, would need to have with his staff. I think it may be appropriate that Dean, I think he's been with us for many years now, that perhaps this is an opportunity for him to learn management skills, by managing an apprenticeship, an apprentice, particularly as that apprentice is going to cover the type and nature of work that he does. So Dean will be appropriately supervising and looking at the work that the person we employ does. So if there is some work that could be taken off of Dean, of a certain nature, that can be apportioned elsewhere, I'll leave that to the chief executive to determine, because it's not for us to determine. I'm going to propose though, that the apprentice that we do employ, if they are between 16 and 18, 16 and 17 should be employed at £6.25 per hour. And if they're 18, that would go up to £8 per hour. So that's a proposal, is there a second for that?
I seconded.
Seconded by councillor Ara. Is there any discussion on those particular figures? Then I assume that's a total agreement. So I think the proposal is, we seek to employ one apprentice. That apprentice will be to cover Dean, the type and nature of Dean's work. If the town clerk could look at the nature of Dean's work, and if there are certain minor clerical work that he does, that can be farmed off to another member of staff, then that perhaps would be appropriate. Even if that member of staff needs to increase their hours, this will give Dean the opportunity to hone more management skills in looking after that apprentice, and, well, hopefully that we can put that in place. But there'd only be one apprentice, and that would be the apprentice to cover Dean. Okay?
Peter, could I just make the comment, the councillor Wing?
Councillor Ara, who hasn't spoken, and then councillor Wing.
Okay, I just wanted to say that I don't know, Richard, if you know, there is a government scheme going on. I don't know if the Ramsgate Town Council, as an organisation, actually apply for it, because there is an apprenticeship scheme, that if any organisation or catering, you know, hospitality department takes them on, government is actually paying their money, and also paying the person who are being employed. I don't know if there's something, Richard, you have looked into or not.
Yeah, I did notice about that, which is kind of why I put the technicians thing in, but I wasn't really very keen on it, I must admit. I only put it in as an option, because I did know about that, and I figured that's how that would get paid for. Dean's apprenticeship was a two-year one, and I would suggest this, what we do again, and it had a structured course for it, which we didn't really have for the technician apprenticeships. And I think really that's what we've got to do. I'll have to talk to Dean, and Eileen, and the others, about what we can do. I think I've got one or two ideas, I think if Dean's mind, if we could put on to, to transfer to someone else. But if you, you know, I will have a word with him, with everybody this week, and we'll work something out, okay?
Okay, so councillor Wing.
I think our apprentice, it's important not to restrict him to looking at Dean's work, although that would be his priority, because I believe that young people need to be upskilled and flexible in the way they can move from roles. So I would hope that the apprentice would get an oversight and a chance to experience all the roles of the people we employ at Ramsgate Town Council, including our technicians, so they'd get an oversight and experience of everything.
Well, the reality is, that for the first year, we would, the whole purpose of the apprentice is to seek someone to cover Dean, to cover ours, as well as cover Dean. So I think the first year, he needs to, the person, and not he, it may be a she, would need to cover, learn the role that Dean currently carries out. And I think that's appropriate to a, to a sort of day release scheme on apprenticeship as well, with computing and other, and other technical capabilities. In the second year, it may be appropriate, and be found to be appropriate, that they can branch, that that person can branch out and have a look at other roles and functions that we carry out. But I propose that for the first year, that this person concentrates on covering and learning the role that Dean currently carries out, to allow Dean to pass over some of that work to the apprentice, and then expand his horizons as well. So I'm proposing at 16 and 17, it's £6.50 an hour, and if the, if the individual is 18 or over, which we don't really want 18 or over, let's say 18, then it's £8 an hour. Okay, anybody opposed to that? Then I assume that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We now move on to Agenda Item 6. High Street HAS, Help for High Street Fund applications for Ramsgate, town clerk.
Well, I'm sorry, and this is a bit disappointing, because I did contact both sides of this. I spoke to the TDC, I sent an email to the TDC officer concerned, who's in charge of the Help for the High Streets Fund, which is in the hands of the Ministry of Housing, Communications, Communities and Local Government. But I haven't heard anything from her at all. I know she was on leave for a bit of the time, but not a dicky bird out of them. On the HAS side of things, I did get an email back, and there was an agreement, they would forward me a report. But they haven't. So really, well, I know further forward than where we were before, and again, it's all disappointing, simply because I know there's been trouble over the High Street HAS, because there were two buildings that were put forward for some of the money, and I know one of them withdrew, and there was going to be all sorts of negotiations at the, with historic England. The only thing I can suggest is that I trace both of them up, and get them to do a report to you, and then we have a, and some kind of presentation from them, to see where they are at the moment and what they're doing. They certainly are not reporting to anybody in the coastal communities team, they're not reporting to me, they're not reporting to anybody, I think it's all hugga mugga within, I'm afraid, done it. And there's very little I can do about it. Maybe, as we've got a cabinet member there, you, perhaps you can persuade them to update.
Councillor Orban, would you like to come in there at all, or?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to, I'm more than happy to take anything forward, Chair, and if, and go to the relevant portfolio holder, and to click some backsides, if we're not getting any response. So, Richard, if you, if you drop me an email, then I'm more than happy to chase that up.
Well done, well done, Dean. Councillor Green, you wanted to input?
Please. I raised this initially, because, I mean, I may have missed something, but as far as I know, neither of these schemes have been reported in any, in any sense to the Town Council, which seems extraordinary to me, in that they're both proposing to spend a substantial amount of money on items that affect the town, and we collectively have no knowledge about what's proposed, when it's proposed, or how it's going. Which is why I asked Richard to obtain, preferably, a report from the two officers that are supposedly running these schemes.
Okay, well, hopefully councillor Orban, as a cabinet member at the moment, will be more successful than our town clerk, because he has direct input to the officers involved at Thannet District Council, and we'll leave that to Mr councillor Orban. So perhaps if councillor Orban can get a report from these two officers, it can be, it can be on the agenda for the next Finance and General Purposes Committee. Yes?
Yep. We'll do it tomorrow, Chair.
Well done.
Once I get the email.
So if the town clerk can send you an email, and then you can move forward on that, okay?
Yep, smashing.
We now move on to Agenda Item 7. Radford House Distribution Centre for Food Bank. Town clerk.
Right, this has moved on. I have ordered some shelving, so that they can store some stuff. We've already started collecting food, they've already asked us to collect some food for them, and we are storing some food already. The shelving has been, has been bought and paid for, and should be delivered, hopefully this week, if not early next week, and I will chase them up if it hasn't come by the end of this week. I've bought some heavy duty shelving, so that can be reused for other purposes by ourselves. The money for that is coming from councillor Constantine's fund. We're scooping up whatever remains of her money that before, that she has, her members' fund. One to pay for the shelving, which is just over £1,000, including VAT. And the remainder will be held in trust, to be used if they run short of money in terms of buying food. So it's moving forward, it will happen, and it'll probably start operating next week.
Well done. Now, I think it needs to go through council. The Salvation Army offered to pay a sum of monies to use our Radford House. I had proposed that they should be at nil cost to the Salvation Army. We had a proposal earlier on, where we would cease the distribution of monies to food banks throughout the Thannet, as we weren't getting much support, or any support from any other district, any other town councils at all, or even Thannet District Council, but would continue to aid and assist the Salihane in Ramsgate. Now I think this is perhaps appropriate, that we actually do this. So I'm proposing that the Salihane, at nil cost, are allowed to store their food at our Radford House, and we thank them, but it's unnecessary for them to make a contribution. So I'm making that as a proposal. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Chair.
Seconded by councillor Orban, he was first. Anyone in opposition to that?
Could I just ask a question, please? Councillor Piper?
Councillor Piper, certainly Stuart.
It will remain our operation though, wouldn't it? Ramsgate Town Council's operation not become a Salvation Army operation from our premises? Can I just get some clarity on that?
Sure. Town clerk, can you illuminate councillor Piper on that?
They will have their staff there, but we will have overall control, because we own the building, and we'll control the building. And they are there at our, on an ex-gratia basis, you might say. And they will be leaving at the end of June, which is in their letter, which you've been sent. And that's as far, that's as far as it goes. So yes, as far as, as far as the day-to-day operational things, it is a Salvation Army project. What we're doing is assisting and helping them. But as far as the building's concerned, and the operation of the building, let's in and anybody else, it's wholly down to RTC. Does that answer your question?
Councillor Piper?
Thank you for the question. I just can't quite understand why we need to change the operating practice that we had before. Wouldn't RTC running a very successful food bank programme ourselves?
Yes, we were, but they can't run their own food bank in their own place anymore, because they, they think they will need it, possibly need it for winter, for housing people and homeless people. And there's not room to have their food bank and their, and their homeless facility at the same time. So which is, that's why they've come to us and asked whether we could, they could use our facility. We won't be, our staff won't be doing stuff, their own volunteers will be doing it, but we will be helping them, and we will be adding, obviously adding our logistics support to them, as we did with, as we did before. We will not be handing out the, we will not be handing, sorting out the food parcels and things. We didn't do that last time, all we did was just deliver food to the various food banks so they could distribute it. All that's happening now, is that that... All that's happening now is that that distribution bit, that, that, where it's broken up into food parcels, is being done at our Radford House instead of where it was before.
Councillor Wing, can I make a comment?
Second councillor Wing. Councillor Piper finished the question, his question first.
I understand the reply, thank you.
Okay, councillor Wing.
As you know, I'm doing two mornings a week at the Sally Army, and their, their main problem is, is that they feed homeless people every morning midweek up until nine o'clock, and then they run a food distribution, and that has become really problematic for them. So I'm assuming they're move, they want to move the food distribution bit to, to, to the fire station. It's very well run, people come and, people, it's not willy-nilly, people have to apply, they're screened, nobody enters the building and the bags are distributed at the door. So, so they are, their protocols are very tight, so it shouldn't be a problem at all.
Is everybody happy with that? If you're not, please speak. Councillor Green?
Chair, can I, can I say some?
Councillor Green, yes.
I agree that we don't want to get involved as an organisation in the actual handing out of the food.
Correct.
But I wonder if there is any other help that we could give, and I'm thinking particularly of publicity for this game.
I think basically we could ask the Sally Ann, and if they would wish, any other services that we could provide, of the nature that you just suggest, and if they, and if they say yes, then we can put that up in the notice boards, I think that's appropriate. Anybody opposed to that? No? Well, that's, that's a yes. Okay, Richard, we leave that to you to organise with the Sally Ann. No distribution of food by our staff, but if there's any other type of nature of assistance, i.e. advertising the service, then, then we can apply that in our notice boards, okay? And on our website. Okay. So we move on now to the Ramsgate Fund. Deputy Town Clerk, can you come on?
Thank you, Chairman. The budget for the Ramsgate Fund is thirty-five thousand for this year. The balance remaining is twenty-six thousand, three five three thirty-eight. The maximum that can be awarded is three and a half thousand unless, of course, council decides otherwise. Okay, we've got five applications, I'll be brief. Dean will get the report up for you, hopefully. RF eight is Newington Community Association, C I C zero two. The projected expenditure is two thousand and seventy-six pounds, they're asking for the full amount. The funding sought for the replacement of two fire doors to the Newington Community Centre. They have currently a property lease with T D C, which shows the charity is responsible for the repairs of the premises except the roof and walls. However, the applicant has advised that all council at T D C agreed in December last year to an asset transfer, so it will become the charity's property, but this is delayed due to Covid pandemic. The applicant states that it's critical that the centre is secure in order to be able to reopen the facilities for the community as soon as practical. The doors will be professionally installed and volunteers will be painting the doors, so they're, they're doing some in-house as well. Council did decide, please, thank you.
I'm a bit concerned about the volunteers painting the doors. They need to be special fire retardant paint if they're going to paint, I don't think you paint fire doors, but hey ho. I have some fear with this. As the, the, the facility is going to be transferred over to the particular charity, not for the first time, they come to Ramsgate Town Council, they came to Ramsgate Town Council to renew their boiler, now they've come to Ramsgate Town Council to renew fire doors. Although the charity has taken over the responsibility of maintenance of the building, it seems to me every time there is maintenance, they actually come to Ramsgate Town Council and the residents to actually pay for it. The charity, are they fundraising any monies themselves, and if so, how are they doing it? Okay. Can you, yeah, can you take away, Eileen? I want to see the members, I don't want to see agenda item eight.
Okay, Dean, will you remove the report, please? Thank you.
Members should have access to the report anyway.
Chair, can I speak?
Yeah, hold on a moment, just wait till Dean actually lets me get back into seeing the actual, there we are. Now I've got, okay, councillor Green.
I have a problem with this, Chair. I mean, as it stands at the moment, we would be giving money to T D C because they own the building.
Yeah.
And I don't think we normally do that.
No.
And secondly, I would have liked to have seen an application to the big local fund which Newington has assigned to them in conjunction with us, so I'm, I'm opposed to this.
Any other members wish to speak on this particular agenda item?
I'd like to speak councillor Campbell.
Is that councillor Moore? Councillor Moore?
Yeah. There is some money in the pot from the big local, but that is spent, you have no idea how many food parcels that they pay for and they work for for nothing and send them out, do the parcels up, send them out, put them in the doorways, someone works on a Saturday and a Sunday to have what's left over in the doorway so people can come and get what they want. And let's face it, we get very little from Ramsgate Town Council in Newington as it is, and it might be.
Pardon?
Yes.
You had a boiler?
It might be, at the moment, it does belong to T D C, but it's their responsibility to look after the doors and the boiler. The, it's, all that is down to T D C is the walls and the roof.
Yes, my, yeah, my point councillor Moore is, that it seems that the charity has taken on voluntarily the maintenance and ownership of this particular building as the asset transfer will take place, but they don't seem to want to pay for any of the maintenance. They want to come to RTC every time to ask us to pay for it. If the charity want to take over the maintenance, they don't have to, it's not mandatory, T D C are not forced to be upon them. If they want to take it over and ownership of it, then they should actually fundraise, to actually fundraise to maintain the building that they voluntarily want to take over. It just seems to me that what will happen is every time there needs to be a new fire door or a new window or it's something else new, they're going to come to Ramsgate Town Council and ask us to pay for it. That's what's happened in the past and is happening now.
Well, it is a community institution, isn't it? It's for the community.
Yes, I appreciate that. There is a big local that is actually funding that all of the community services in Newington. It, that should be the first stop for the charity to go to, is the big local, and they should apply to them for this particular monies for the fire doors. They seem, they had millions, how many millions do they have, ten million?
They haven't had ten millions, they had one million, and how many years ago was that?
I don't know, I don't know where the money's gone, and I don't know what it's been spent on, but the reality is, it's the big local, it's still running.
It's spent on food.
What, the big local? No.
Yeah. The big local is involved with the community centre, and they pay for the food that we give away.
Right, yeah. Well, they have a lot of food for a million quid. Anyway, members, any other members wish to speak on this agenda item? Is there a proposal? Councillor Green has proposed rejection. I'm second in that. Is there anybody else? Is there anyone opposed to that proposal?
I am.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I am.
And councillor Wing, and councillor Wing.
Right, that's two. Anybody else opposed?
Did you get mine?
Who's mine?
Councillor Crittendon. Councillor Crittendon, Helen.
Someone's got their hand up, you can have to tell me whom.
I did, councillor Crittendon, Helen.
So it's Crittendon?
And councillor Ara.
Ara.
Councillor Wing opposed.
Wing. Anyone else?
Heatherington.
Want them to have the money.
Right.
I'm, I'm going to make a counterproposal.
Councillor Piper? Yeah. Well, that proposal falls. Councillor Piper?
Chair.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Hold on, councillor Green, councillor Piper.
Yeah, I thought it was a condition of the Ramsgate Fund that we didn't pay for anything that would normally be the responsibility of another council. Another council.
That is true, that we don't subsidise Thannet District Council. Hold on a moment, please. We don't subsidise Thannet District Council speaking, please. Yeah, we don't subsidise Thannet District Council. However, this is a charity that has come forward and now in the process of an asset transfer, so I think we could actually, in this sense, add some leniency to that. Councillor Piper?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask if the proposal fell, could I make a counterproposal that says?
You can, you can make a counterproposal now.
Once they are in possession of the building, having completed the asset transfer, they will need to be responsible for the safety of everyone in it. So I would like to suggest that they do have the money for those doors, but with it comes a letter explaining our position that we cannot be their primary source of funding for the projects that they need to do. But because this involves public safety, I think the fire doors are something they really should have. Thank you.
So your, your proposal is that you, how much money do you wish to give them, proposing?
The amount they've requested.
The full amount?
Yeah.
Right, is there a seconded for that?
Seconded, councillor Wing.
Councillor Wing, right. Now, it's proposed and seconded that the, that the full amount be offered to this organisation, the charity, with a covering letter stating that in future, the primary source of funding for the maintenance of their building should not be Ramsgate Town Council. Yes? Right, that is the proposal. Now, all those in, no, all those in opposition, please state now.
I'm opposing that.
So am I, that's two. Anyone else? Then that proposition carries. That's the proposition. So the money is two thousand and seventy-six pound with a covering letter stating as I've already stated, okay? Deputy Town Clerk, move on to the next agenda, next item on this particular agenda.
Thank you, Chairman. RF eight, sorry, RF nine has come from Thannet Community Development Trust, they're asking for one thousand eight hundred of a projected expenditure of seven thousand. Funding is sought for the purchase of equipment to allow trust staff to work from home more efficiently during the pandemic. The applicant states that this will allow the trust to continue helping the community to make it through various lockdowns and loss of jobs. They're talking about purchasing two laptops, two iPads, two, and two Microsoft packages for the laptops. Quotes were supplied, thank you.
Richard Dean, can you stop putting the application up on the, I can't see anybody? Thank you. It seems they have a lot of money for two laptops, yeah, and a couple of iPads, seven thousand pounds. Dear me, what are they sort of, well, they've got gold covers on them. Anyway, members, anybody wish to comment on this particular agenda item?
Councillor Crittendon.
Councillor Crittendon?
I'd like to oppose it.
And the reasoning, if you've got one, please?
Yeah, I think we're basically supplying them with their office equipment, and I don't think that that's appropriate, and it's, it becomes part of their assets.
I don't even know, who are the Thannet Community Trust? Is anyone, anyone in line with me?
Yeah, Dave and I know them quite well, I think. They're based up in Hereston Road, just off Hereston Road, Lilian Road. They, they have used their property in the past for teaching, for, for like training and stuff like that, and they own the, or actually they lease out the buildings around the skate park, so they, they sort of like management of the, of those buildings. And frankly, I'm not quite sure what else they do, do, I don't know if Dave knows of what else they do.
Anybody else like to input to this particular item?
Chair.
Councillor Green?
They seem, they seem to be a very well-funded organisation, and they pay their senior staff a large, large賬值. I don't think they're, I think they could well find leverage for all of this from a random resources.
Yes, I think that was the conclusion I came to, that the word gravy train sprung to mind, perhaps I'm being overly unkind, but I, I'm proposing rejection.
Agree, second.
Is there anybody opposing my, the proposal for rejection? I take that by silence, that it's unanimous that we reject this application. Town clerk, the next application, please.
Thank you, Chairman. RF ten is from the newly created community group of the Lovell Alliance Square. Their projected expenditure is three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five pounds. They have asked for the full amount, but I have advised that three and a half thousand is the normal cap for you. The funding is sought for the purchase and installation of gates to either end of two alleyways between numbers twenty and twenty-one, and the rear of numbers one to twelve of the square for the prevention of antisocial behaviour. They did supply residents reports about that. They've also added in here, that's the main application, they've also added in to purchase plants to fill a circular flower bed in the middle of the square, and to purchase and plant a living Christmas tree within the squares, which would last for a long time. I believe councillor Orban, you have full knowledge of this, thank you, council.
Councillor Orban? Who has full knowledge of this?
I have, Chair. And I have to say, probably it was my encouragement for them to apply, and the reason was, both myself and councillor Huxley met with the residents' group some weeks back now, and to see what they required, what they needed, what they, what they wanted to do. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of this, although not so much for the tree, to be quite honest, but hey ho, that was what they wanted, but I, I, I would fully support what they need to get themselves up and running. There is antisocial behaviour there, like, like there is in most places in bloody Ramsgate at the moment. But certainly, I, I supported Chair, and support not their, what they're claiming, but the full amount that we can give them. Thank you, Chair.
I have a problem with this. I mean, councillor Green used to live in this particular square. These particular alleys, are they owned by the properties that actually back onto these particular alleys, or are they owned by Thannet District Council, or are they unallocated? Councillor Green?
One of them is adopted, so it's owned by K C C. The other one is, is owned by the, the properties that the back gardens go onto it. Either way, they're going, they're going to need either written permission by each of the properties, or, or, and a K C C. So I would suggest that we, if, if we are minded to allocate the money, that it's conditional on them obtaining that pieces of information. With regards to the central flower bed, I do know, because I used to live there, that flower bed is in fact the remains of a pool, and underneath that rather thin layer of soil is concrete, so they're going to have problems planting a tree there.
I thought we only planted Christmas trees in allotments, but anyway, bother by it. Councillor Orban was waving his hand, and councillor Mackeson, I can see, comes second.
He was waving, Chair, and it's just, just to advise that, I did advise them that with any, that with any other things regarding to the gates, they need to check with Thannet District Council as to one, whoever owns the, the areas, and for them to, to see whether they need to reply for planning consent, so they are fully aware of all those issues, Chair. So they are fully aware of all those issues, Chair.
Yeah, just to interject before councillor Mackeson comes in, this would be the thin end of the wedge. There are hundreds of alleys in Ramsgate, particularly in central Ramsgate, and if they found out that we were funding gates that either side of the either end of the alley, yeah, that was particularly owned by the houses, there would be a whole plethora of requests to put gates in at either end of the alleys. It would cost thousands and thousands of pounds. I'm going to suggest rejection of this. Councillor Mackeson.
I want to support what you're saying, councillor Campbell. I need to sort of report back to you and Rashawn as Central Harbour councillors. They have blocked off the alley, Pig Alley, next to Macy's pub. Not just because of the pub, but because of the residents at the top. And I feel quite right, it is the thin end of the wedge. We shouldn't be, it's part of the history of the town, we shouldn't be blocking off these historic, rights away probably, without, I don't know who owns it, I spoke to the pub owner, and then...
Well, I think to stick to this agenda item, not stray into Pig Alley. I mean, we...
No, and I'm just talking, reinforcing the thin end of the wedge business. That's all, thank you.
Right, councillor Crittenden, and then councillor Ara.
I just wanted to say to councillor Mackinson that I did a lot of investigation on Pig Alley at the start, and we'll talk about it afterwards.
Okay. Councillor Ara.
Yes, I was just going to say that Pig Alley is not owned to Central Harbour, it belongs to...
Oh, wherever it belongs to, it's something to do with this agenda item. This is about the... This is about gates owned between numbers twenty and twenty-one, and one to twelve Bell Alliance Square. One is owned by KCC, and the other one is owned privately by the houses that back on to it. None of them, therefore, are the responsibility of Ramsgate Town Council. Councillor Green.
I suggest motivating this is drug dealing, Chair, because I do know that these alleys, when I used to live there, that were used for that purpose.
Well, yes, I appreciate their major problem. Councillor Albon.
If I may, Chair, to move this on, I propose that in principle, if this is, if we can do this, that the money is there for them, providing they get the relevant consent.
They won't get it.
No. I object to that.
Hold on, let councillor Albon finish, and then you can come in after this, councillor Piper.
I'm proposing that, and obviously then it's up to you.
Right, there is another proposition on the table. Is there anyone who wants to second this for the £3,000?
I'll second it, Chair.
You're seconding it, right, so it's proposed and seconded. Does anybody want to debate? I will interject again and state that neither of these alleys are the responsibility of Ramsgate Town Council. One of them is privately owned by the owners of the properties that back on to the alley, and the other one, from information received by the very reliable councillor Green, who just seconded it, is owned by KCC, and he actually stated in the last agenda item that we don't subsidise other councils. So I think I've shot his fox there. So the reality is, yeah, one of them's owned by KCC, the other one is owned by the residents. I have had any number of requests by... Hold on, councillor Albon. I've had any number of requests by residents in Central Harbour over the years to ask whether they can block off their alleys with gates, and whether RTC will pay for them, and I've had to tell them. No, it's not the responsibility of Ramsgate Town Council or Sannick District Council. All the properties are owned, these alleys are owned by the actual properties that back on to them. If they wish to fund them themselves and have them installed, they should have permission from KCC or TDC, but not any money from RTC. Councillor Piper, Linda.
But apparently we do subsidise other councils now.
Councillor Piper is next.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, you muted yourself.
I'd like to vote against the proposition.
Okay.
I don't think they should go ahead with this at all. You can't just put up gates just because you fancy doing it. And I agree with you about the thin end of the wedge, where we're going to have loads of people who want to put gates up. Thank you.
There'll be loads, believe me. Right, who else wants to speak or vote? Speak on this agenda item, not Pig Alley, this particular agenda item. There's been a proposal for money, £3,000 be granted, yeah? Proposed by councillor Albon, seconded by councillor Green. Anybody wish to speak on it before we vote?
Councillor Piper, please.
Councillor Stuart Piper.
Yes. You're quite right, it's not our responsibility to do gates for private house owners, and Kent County Council, in my personal experience, will not give permission to block the highway, because that's exactly what it is. If the pathway is owned by KCC, it forms part of the highway, they will not allow it. I know this because I spent years trying to buy the alley behind my house, and they won't do it. So I would oppose the granting of money for the very sensible reasons.
Go to the vote in a minute. Okey-dokey, anybody else wish to speak on this item? No, we go to the vote. All those in favour of granting £3,000 for this particular project, please state there now.
Councillor Green.
Councillor Albon. That's two. Anybody else? It falls.
Councillor Huxley is my pro.
Three. There's one, two, three, four, five, six against. So that falls. I propose rejection of this application on the grounds that the householders own the property, one of the properties, and KCC owns the other. So I'm proposing rejection on those grounds. Is there a second?
Yes, councillor Nixie.
Councillor Nixie seconds. Is there anybody in opposition to that proposal? Councillor Albon. That is carried. Deputy Town Clerk, next agenda item.
Thank you, Chairman. The next application is returning. It's RF eleven, the Ramsgate Arts Barge, CIC. They're asking for £3,491.65. They came to council in September, asking for the capital items to be purchased, as in hives vests, hard hats, masks, paintbrushes, et cetera, et cetera, to get started on the renovation of the arts barge, which you, as you know, is in the harbour at the moment. They have returned, they have a crowdfunding page that has raised just under five and a half thousand. That was the 22nd of October, so they are fundraising, and that closes on the 13th of December. Thank you.
Okay, so they've raised £5,000 of a near £100,000 project. They asked for £3,491, I can, you know, that's over the top. My point is that when they got to £97,000, or £94,000, that we may consider granting the last £3,000. Because this project, I think, is completely underfunded. I doubt very much they'll ever find the £97,000 or £100,000 to actually renovate this old wreck of a barge that, in my view, is disgrace in the harbour, but bother by. So I'm not supporting this. But other members, anybody else wish to speak on this? Please speak now.
Yes, Chair.
Hold on, councillor Albon first. Councillor Albon.
I thought councillor Green was first, Chair.
All right, councillor Green then.
I think we rejected this previously, Chair. A, because it looked as though it was a commercial operation. And B, because they had absolutely no funding when they came to us, or any apparent means of raising any. They are now a community interest company rather than a commercial organisation.
Yeah.
And they've started fundraising and raised admittedly a relatively small amount of money, but more than what they're asking from us.
Yeah.
Now, if it's successful, it would be a really important addition to the Ramsgate scene and the harbour. So I think we should donate some money towards it. I'm not saying whether it should be the full amount, but I think we should, it's important to them to be able to say that they've got the support of Ramsgate Town Council. So if we offered, say, a thousand pounds, I would support them.
So you're proposing a thousand pounds for this particular agenda item, is that correct, councillor Green?
That's correct.
And is there a second for that?
I will second it.
Councillor Ara. Anybody wish to speak on that before we go to the vote?
Yes, please, Chair.
Councillor Albon.
Yes, please, Chair. Yeah. First of all, I just find it absolutely amazing that that rust bucket that is sitting there in the harbour, no one's worried about that rust bucket, no one's saying anything about the rust bucket, but about a small pontoon that's sitting there, they've all gone barking mad. So I find it, because it's all arty-farty, that they want...
Oh, it's calm down.
Anyway, just to say, as I don't want to be seen as a...
Philistine.
...bad person, I will support councillor Green on that. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Stuart Piper.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I am aware that this barge has been turned down at several previous locations. I'm aware also that though privately owned, it's been registered as a community interest company, but looking at the report that we have, there is a paragraph that says, "This is an ambitious but extremely important project, as Ramsgate continues to evolve as a creative community. In just seven years, our town has increased the number of galleries from one to nine", which is, I believe, a clear illustration of this burgeoning sector. I would suggest for somewhere like Ramsgate, nine is probably too many already. So I can't think they're succeeding, but the main issue for me, which I haven't seen any clarity on, that corner of the harbour, if you remember, P22 was shifted to there.
I know you're just going to bring that up, I've got to be honest.
Because it was occupying the heritage corner.
It's certainly heritage.
The heritage area of the harbour there is meant for vessels to come and go. This barge...
It looks like it's going to sink any day.
Well, it would be there almost permanently, and therefore we would have lost the facility for heritage vessels coming in and out. So I would be opposed to our involvement in the development of this in any way, shape or form. Thank you.
Okay, you made that absolutely clear. Councillor Heatherington, I noticed you wanted to speak, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agreed with David, actually, because I think it could be a really useful asset to the town. It's quite an ambitious project, but to show that it will, a thousand pounds would be a good idea, actually.
Okay, well, I've got to be honest with you, I've got to own up now, I'm an atheist, so I don't believe in miracles. And I've got to be honest with you, the notion that this old rust bucket will ever be of any value or use to the town at all would be, in my case, an absolute miracle. I'm opposing tums to this particular project, let alone a thousand pounds. This is, we're talking about council taxpayers' money. Have you, can you imagine? I mean, it's a rust bucket. Anyway. Councillor Crittenden.
And then councillor Wing, please.
And then councillor Wing. Councillor Crittenden, then councillor Wing.
In principle, I would love to support it, and I do follow what Dave is saying, and I do support that. But I'm also hearing what you and councillor Piper are saying, and I'm wondering whether or not there is further information that we might seek to obtain before we do give any funds. I don't know if that's feasible or what we would want, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay. Councillor Wing.
Steve, councillor Albon, I actually agree with you. I'm told it's a very beautiful boat, but I wish it was in somebody else's harbour, actually, and I don't think it can get off the ground. I mean, if they had £50,000 of the £100,000, we might well get behind it. Their plans are not in keeping with the Royal Harbour and the listed states of the harbour. We've just got, I kind of understand why the harbour master actually allowed it in our harbour and our port, which is turning into a tinker's yard, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm sort of a bit opposed with this. And don't forget, where is the heritage pontoon that was there and that was taken away by people and hasn't returned? So I want to see that back, and if it stays, it needs to be moved to a different part of the harbour where it's less visible.
Yeah, I've got to be honest with you, probably the harbour master allowed it to be berth there because it sunk somewhere strategically important to allow other vessels to come in and out. Anyway, bother by. So does anybody else wish to speak on this?
Chair.
Councillor Green.
It's not a rust bucket. It is seaworthy. It has been up on the slipway to ensure that it's seaworthy. And I assure you that the harbour master would not allow it there if it was in any way likely to sink.
Okay, well, I'm glad it's not going to sink. But as to its appropriateness, I'm very dubious. Anyway, all those, there's a proposal from councillor Green, seconded by councillor Albon, that we allocate a thousand pounds to this sinking fund, sorry, this particular project. All those in favour, please say your name and speak now.
Yes.
Councillor Heatherington, one.
Councillor Crittenden.
And two, you said you was against it a minute ago. Anyway, bother.
Councillor Green.
Councillor Green. Who else?
Councillor Moore.
Councillor Nixie.
Right, that's one, two, three, four, five.
And councillor Ara.
Sure.
That's six. Those two. So...
I'm opposed to it.
Okay, that's passed. A thousand pounds of council taxpayers' money to this particular project, and let's hope the miracle happens. Okay. One more?
One more, Chairman, thank you.
For Yacht Club. It's right up my street, this. Right.
Yes.
Tammy, Tammy.
The grant requested is a thousand pounds towards the purchase of more lights and associated bits and pieces to go with them, so that they can carry on with the annual Ramsgate illuminations and expand it further into the harbour. The Yacht Club will be helping to fund this, and so will the boat owners. So they're asking for a thousand pounds towards new lighting, thank you.
Well, this seems to be money well spent for me, I've got to be honest. This year, we won't be having, I assume, the great gathering of the opening of the lights because of this dreaded virus. The attraction of the yachts and the harbour lit up is absolutely wonderful. Six weeks of illuminations, it's a massive draw, it's been on TV so many times, coaches come down, I don't know how many coaches will be coming down this year, but it certainly is an attraction. Oh, Christ. How many times has councillor Moore logged in this time?
That was the rear admiral of the Yacht Club trying to get through there.
I've bowled the boat that's just sunk in the harbour. Okay, so I'm proposing that we offer, we grant them a thousand pounds. Members wish to speak on it or vote on it?
Chair, I'll second that.
Second, councillor Green.
If they want to speak, I think these lights will look very attractive on the arts barge.
Very true, yes. Let's hope they're waterproof.
They have actually something special planned for this year, actually.
Do they? Does that include a bonfire?
No, there's no bonfire.
Bonfire of the arts. Anybody opposed to this thousand pounds going to the Temple Club for these lights? No, that's unanimous, except a thousand pounds. Thank you, thank you, deputy town clerk. We now move on to Samuel Patty, posthumous freedom of the town, town clerk.
Chairman, you've missed an item.
Hello? Our events fund update.
That's me.
Oh, go on then.
Thank you. Okay, just an update on the fund. We still have money in the fund, just over £25,000. A lot of events didn't go ahead. We're still waiting to, we've not released to the Contra Pop, they're due to have an event, four events between December and March. They're awarded £2,000, that's not released as yet because we don't know what's happening. And also £500 for a day of light, again, Moot, we're going to look for another date for that, don't know if that's... Again, Moot, we're going to look for another date for that, don't know if that's going to happen. I believe Town Clerk may be able to tell me, switch on and fireworks, because I don't know what's happening with those. That's another 8,000 that potentially won't be spent. So at the moment, we still have money in the fund, in the events fund, that's all I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Town Clerk. The fireworks, I don't know what's happening, that sometime, obviously that's going to be on New Year's Eve. We're going to, in lockdown for a month. Supposedly it's going to end on the early December 5th, I think it is, or the 2nd of December. Other lockdown procedures, I think, will be introduced. We'll have to see how our particular town is affected at that time. So I think we need to put that in abeyance and make a decision later on in the year. Thank you, Deputy Town Clerk. Now we move to the Samuel Patty, posthumous freedom of the town clerk.
Yeah, I've put in a resolution, a draft resolution for the council to adopt if they so wish. Would you like me to read through it? Chairman? You're muted.
Yes.
Okay, I'll read it out. The resolution, Ramsgate Town Council awards the posthumous honour of freedom of the town to Samuel Patty. This is the only time that the freedom of the town has been given posthumously and to a foreign national. This is a symbol of the strength of feeling felt by Ramsgate Town Council in response to the brutal murder of someone whose life has been given over to the pursuit of learning, tolerance and enlightened thinking. The council hopes that by this action, the family of Samuel Patty and the community in Conflance Saint Laurent will know that they have many friends in Ramsgate.
Yeah, can I just suggest an amendment? That right at the end, where it says, "And the community of Conflance Saint Laurent", yeah, include the words "our twinned town", or "one of our twinned towns", yeah? Therefore, it puts in context as to why this particular individual and town is particularly important to Ramsgate.
Yep.
Okay? So with that amendment, if accepted, how do members feel?
Can I comment, please, Chair? Councillor Piper?
Councillor Piper.
Thank you, I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm just wondering, it's a posthumous award for him, which would never be used. If a member of his family were to come over for an official Ramsgate parade, would that family member be able to wear the insignia and take their place within that parade? That would seem to me a sensible idea, rather than simply a posthumous award which would never be used or recognised. Thank you.
Well, I understand the sentiment you state. Anybody else wish to have a view on that particular? Councillor Crittenden's waving her hand.
I wanted to ask whether or not the statement could include a reason for the award being made.
Well, I think it states that, doesn't it? It says that.
It makes sense to me.
Well, in response to the brutal murder of someone whose life has been given over to the pursuit of learning, tolerance and enlightened thinking.
Oh, all right.
That's the reason, contained within the script, I think. I think that says it all, don't you? Anybody else wish to comment? Councillor Green?
Doesn't freedom of the town imply that somebody is invited here if they wish to come?
I did so. I see the Town Clerk nodding his head.
Yes, it is, yep.
I think this is, this is a resolution in recognition of the actions taken by Samuel Patty and the murder of him. Obviously, there would be an invite to a member of his family to come over to receive on his behalf this particular honour. If they felt that they didn't want to, or they were inconvenienced or anything, we could send it over. I think we actually send people over to Saint Laurent on a regular basis, don't we?
We haven't in the last two years, but there's probably no reason why not. There were reasons why in the last two years, well, we haven't, obviously Covid this year, and there was other reasons that there was disruption.
Okay, I mean, we could invite, if it's felt appropriate, after lockdown. Well, this is very difficult, isn't it? I've got to be honest with you. We don't even know what circumstances are going to prevail after the lockdown ends, if it ends on the 2nd of December, and what protocols will be in place for people coming over from France. Wait, what do you say? Sorry?
May I make a suggestion? If we were invited over to there in the summer of next year, that actually, it's probably, it's probably more appropriate that we actually give it to them there and then, because that's where the murder happened, and it would show. On the other hand, as you might say, to do a ceremony here would also be appropriate. But I think especially over there, in the fact that the murder happened in Conflance, and whether it's an insignia we give them or whether it's a scroll, that's up to us, you know, it's up to the council. But I would thought that it would mean there would be far less, you know, travel for the family if they didn't wish to it, and it's more likely the family would accept it there and then on the day, rather than coming over here and doing that.
Okay, I mean, we could, if you wish. We could, when we inform the family of this particular honour, a scroll and an insignia, I think, is appropriate. That when circumstances would allow, we would wish to send representative of Ramsgate Town Council over to Saint Laurent to present to the family of Mr. Patty this particular award. Yeah? In fact, teach Dean to swim. Or if we got an apprentice, we're right. Chair. Who is it speaking?
Councillor Wing, could I just say something?
Yes, councillor Wing.
I think we all agree that atrocities like this, whoever commits them, whatever communities, whoever's committed the crime and whoever suffers as a consequence, including families and communities, that there is, that atrocities like this create anxieties in all sorts of communities, on and on both sides. So we're talking about the Christian community, and we're also talking about the Islamic community, will be suffering high anxiety. Because let's face it, when these atrocities occur, it's normally some fanatic that's actually got nothing to do with the religion they're perpetrating that offence on. And so there's a part of me which feels a bit uncomfortable about this, because we could be making a statement in favour of, I don't know, I'm going to say it really badly, I think, and I believe me, this is absolutely, you know, I cannot, I cannot, I cannot think how the family must be. But all I'm saying is, that when soft stuff like this happens, there needs to be a calming down and a sense of, we need to come together as a community, so we need to support the Christian community and also the Muslim community, most of whom, the vast majority of which, will be just as equally shocked at this atrocity. And so maybe, if, I'm not sure how I feel about this, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, that's what you're saying, that's fine. Councillor Albin.
Chairman, could I interrupt, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Albin's been called, and then whoever said, "Can I interrupt?", who is it?
One more.
Okay, well, after councillor Albin, councillor Moore.
Chairman, I would just say, I understand what councillor Wing's saying. But I think what we're doing is, we're showing solidarity between town and town. And that we want to recognise the suffering of the town that's taking place. And by giving the freedom of Ramsgate to a member of Mr. Patty's family, is showing solidarity between the towns. And I think that is all that we need to actually take.
Excellent. Councillor Moore.
It's just a reminder, councillor Campbell, that it is Conflance Saint Laurent.
What?
That the name of the town is Conflance Saint Laurent. Not Saint Laurent.
Saint Laurent?
Saint Lawrence.
No, it's not Saint Lawrence. Have you got it in front of you? Conflance Saint Laurent.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it says on the actual statement.
Yep.
Yeah.
I thought you said Laurent.
No, no, I didn't, no. As written on here, you should have the agenda item in front of you, councillor. It's the, you know. Okay, with the amendment, I'll go to the vote. With the amendment of including after Conflance Saint Horon, Horin. Horin, yes, after that, yeah, our twinned town will know that they have many friends in Ramsgate. All those opposed to this particular, please speak now. I take that as being unanimous. Thank you very much. Agenda item 11.
Chairman?
Yes.
Councillor Piper, just for information for the council, Trug Chonk is the chairman of the Twinning Association, and he goes to the town every year at his own expense. So they know him very, very well. He is, of course, the former mayor of Ramsgate. Just put in a suggestion that possibly a conversation with him being the representative, who is so well-known, to go across to the town.
There's only one problem with this, he actually comes back, doesn't he?
That's just for information, Chair.
I appreciate that. Yes, it would be not a problem for the chair of the Twinning Association to go, but I think we also need to send, if somebody, a delegation is going out there, or someone's going out there, we also need to send a member of the actual town council as well. And maybe the mayor, if she doesn't want to go, or the deputy mayor, or the deputy chair. The chair doesn't want to go, he gets seasick. Or whoever volunteers. Let the Town Clerk know, and he can draw lots, okay? Agenda item 11, proposed gift of the statue of George IV. Is it George IV?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, indeed it is.
Town Clerk.
Where are we? Hang on, let's get that right. Yeah. Right, you have a report before you. There's been a proposal that if, if it's completed, a bronze statue standing eight foot tall, standing on a very large pink, probably meaning it would be over 20 foot tall overall, would be gifted to the town in perpetuity for it to look after it. Put in a bit of historical background, it's meant to commemorate the 200th anniversary of Ramsgate being awarded Royal Harbour status and the various pernances therein. And the honour was given simply because George IV received a very poor reception from Dover at the time, which was really bad. And the good citizens of Ramsgate decided not to go that way and actually give him a hearty welcome, and he appreciated it. At the moment, the statue only exists in, what you might say, a moquette form, as clay and, it's got other stuff in it in order to keep it going. So it is in full size, which is eight foot tall. It's a beautiful moquette, the modelling and the casting is amazing, but it's yet to be cast. That's likely to cost 52,000 pounds, all right? So that's the first cost, if it was totally destroyed, we'd have to look at, just the cost of casting it. I've spoken to spacer, the people who are going to likely be doing this casting, and they are saying that you could keep the moulds, but the moulds have a finite life, which would be about 10 to 15 years. After that time, they would deteriorate. Somebody would also have to look after the moulds in a certain area, and I always thought spacer would be the ones who would be doing that, because they created it. Now, they might charge some kind of rent for doing that, but after 15 years, you would need to replace it. If the original artist wasn't available or was not able to do it, you would then have to bring somebody else in to do it. It's possible that it could be done on the basis of using laser and 3D printing in certain sections. Technology sort of exists, but probably by 15 years' time, that may be available. But we're talking about an overall cost, if a total destruction happened, around about 100,000 pounds. I've been to Zurich, they have taken the figures away. They're not prepared to make a estimate of the premium. It's going to have to go to their top render writers, because they are very, very circumspect about statues in general. On top of which, there would have to be some kind of maintenance. I would envisage a premium of nothing less than 5,000 a year. It may be 10,000 a year. That would be based on the fact that our insignia, which is of similar value, is around about 3,000 anyway. And this would be, and that's under lock and key and protection of various sorts, this would be outside, you know, exposed to the elements, as it were. So there you have it, that's the thing. It's not about so much now, it's about the years to come. Because if you make a decision to accept it, you're making the decision for perpetuity. For a council further on up the way, when we are no longer part of this council. And we have to be mindful of that and not just do it on the basis of an immediate decision. So there you have it, that's the sort of cost we may be looking at. It is possible to do, it's whether you feel it's appropriate and right thing for the council to do. I can't answer that, it's council to decide.
Okay, members? Opinions, debates? Anyone wish to speak on this item? Councillor Albin?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of issues here, Chair. I mean, one is, you know, it's probably going to look lovely and all of that, but where's it going to go? Where's it going to be placed? I don't know, I guess it would need to be placed somewhere around the harbour, somewhere, but who knows where? I haven't got a clue where it's going. Who's responsible for putting it there? You know, wherever that is. But I kind of feel that the artists, whoever it is, are giving this, and then they don't want it once it's done, they want to give it to someone else to look after. And I'm just not in favour of that at all, Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members wish to speak on this item? Who? Councillor Linda Piper, you're muted.
Thank you, Chair. I think we should accept this statue, it's part of our history, and it will become part of our heritage. We have groundsmen that could look after it, and I'm sure we could find a space for it somewhere. We should do it, we should accept it. And I think it was our idea to, in the last administration, was to actually get this statue to kind of phase up and running. So I think we should accept it. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else wish to speak on this? Members? Well, if we, councillor Crittenden?
I was largely going to agree with councillor Albin. In principle, I would love to be able to accept it, but I don't think we can justify the long-term cost of it. So I'm really going to say no.
Okay. Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Green?
I'd just like to say something about the anniversary that this is part of the celebration for. Having a Royal Harbour and the Royal Connection is important to the town, in my opinion. It is, it sets the town apart when you're publicising it to try and persuade visitors to come. So I don't think we should dismiss this, but I am horrified by the cost.
Okay. Well, I've got to be honest with you, simply because we own it, does not mean, can I speak? Simply because we own it does not mean we have to insure it.
Well, that was going to be my point, is.
I'm sorry, that's okay, I'll get finished.
The Hall of Fana is littered with statues, that I guess aren't insured at all.
Correct.
So we need to, we need to think about that.
I mean, I think it's probably appropriate that Ramsgate, the Royal Harbour, is ordained with a particular statue of George IV. Um, the artist has done it at cost to himself and he's donating it to hopefully the town council. We could own it, we no need, there's no actual need to insure it. If it is vandalised and thrown into the harbour or whatever happens to it, um, the fact that it may or may not be insured doesn't mean we need and have to replace it. If he dies in, sorry, if the, if he dies. If the moulds, uh, fall apart in fifteen years, so they fall apart in fifteen years. I mean, these bronze statues, they last in perpetuity. I mean, can we give a feather duster to Councillor Linda Piper? She can give it a rub down with an oily rag once a year. Uh, I think she volunteered to do that, didn't you? I think that'll keep it in pristine condition. Um, so I'm going to propose that we... I'm going to propose that we, we accept the gift, but we don't incur cost in actually insuring it, placing it, or anything else with it. We just accept the gift if and when it ever is cast in bronze, because bronze is a very robust material. And the placement of it will not be determined by us, it'll be determined, I assume, by, uh, KCC. Uh, once it's actually in situ, then we take ownership of it, yeah? Uh, but everything else is done, uh, by the appropriate organisation, uh, that is actually looking after it. I think it'd be a, an excellent addition to the Royal Harbour, wherever it's placed. And I'm going to propose that we accept the gift on the grounds that we don't incur the cost and we only take ownership of it after it's been made and installed.
I'll second that, Chair.
Second that by the feather duster holding, Councillor Linda Piper.
Chairman?
Chair, can I just ask, can I just ask if it can go on the art barge? Thank you, Chair.
Well, yeah, I think if it goes onto the art barge, it goes straight through, through the bottom. And it'll hole out. Well, I didn't think that was a sensible suggestion. Anybody? So it's a proposal and it's been seconded, is there...
Chairman, before you go...
Don't see the town clerk's hand up. What do you want to say, town clerk?
It's probably unlawful not to insure it.
No, we don't have to insure it, we don't have to insure anything we own, do we? We don't insure the tables and, we don't insure the cabinets. No! We don't insure it. If it's law to have to insure it, then we don't take responsibility. It's at nil cost. That's my proposal, it's at nil cost. If it starts costing thousands of pounds, then we don't accept it. That's the proposal, okay? Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, please, Pat McInneson.
Okay, Pat McInneson, yes.
Um, the artist told me it was presumed it would go on the corner of Harbour Parade and the road that goes on. So right, yeah, it would look, I mean, I must admit, it would look very good there, but I don't think we should incur any costs whatsoever for it.
That's my proposal. My proposal is that once it's installed, we then take ownership and we incur no cost in doing so, or no future cost. That's the proposal. If there are future costs involved, we don't accept it, okay? That's the proposal. It's been seconded by Councillor Linda Piper. All those opposed to that, please speak now. That's passed unanimously. Well done. Next agenda item, 12. Focus promotion of RTC, town clerk.
Uh, yes, you have reports on, on this subject.
I do.
By Councillor Green. Um, there are a number of reports. Uh, one is from Dean, and another one is, I think, from Rebecca Smith. Um, I can't really add any more to those reports, other than what's already written.
Okay, good.
He lays out exactly what's been done, the newsletters, keeping up with the activities, et cetera. There's all various website statistics. Um, really intuently, I think what they're asking is, here's all what we do here. In closing, here's what we do already. In what other ways should we be doing other things? Uh, what other communication channels can we be using? What other, what other methods, et cetera, et cetera. And there are various other reports here that already, you know, descriptions of it all here. I think, um, uh, I think we find that's fairly comprehensive. And, um, really intuitively, I, I think we need to have suggestions from the council about how is this going to improve? What can we do?
Yeah, I mean, basically, uh, uh, my, um, discussion with you was I think we certainly adequately and excellently promote Ramsgate as a tourist destination for those people who live outside and inside Ramsgate. What I don't think we do, and what my particular, uh, was the, was the promotion of RTC to the residents of Ramsgate. Exactly what services we provide, what we do. We've got, as mentioned earlier, we have six technicians going around Ramsgate on a regular basis, clearing rubbish, cleaning, all other sorts of, uh, work. I don't think ninety percent of the residents of Ramsgate appreciate, uh, for the very little money they do pay to Ramsgate Town Council, all exactly what services they're actually being provided with. This was my point. It wasn't the promotion of Ramsgate to, as a tourist destination and other activities. It was, it was the work of Ramsgate Town Council itself and the services they provide to the residents of Ramsgate. I think if we want to garner support for Ramsgate Town Council, I think that's what we need to do, and we need to do that, uh, more focused, if you like. It may be a letter drop, an articles in the community ad magazine, uh, statements made in our, uh, advertising boards throughout the town. Um, these are things that we could do. Members, any discussion on this item?
Chair.
Councillor Green?
Yeah, um, I, I was told this request came from you, Chair, and these reports were intended, um, as a, as a response from, uh, the town promotion committee. The things that we could do, I'm not particularly advocating any of them. They're just suggestions to the council, the things that we could do. Obviously, there's a cost involved in most of them and a cost in time as well in, in actually doing them. But the suggestions are there, it's up to the council what they want to do.
Do you think it's appropriate that we cede the responsibility of promoting Ramsgate Town Council to the town promotion committee? Or not?
No, no, I don't think it is really. I think it's, I don't know where it would go, but, um...
Where do you think it would sit then? Councillor Albin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, I, I really do think, I really do support what, what you're saying that we should ensure that our residents know exactly what Ramsgate Town Council does for them. It's pretty much the life of Brian, isn't it? You know, whatever did, whatever did the Romans do for us? You know, it's not until you start talking about it that you realise, oh, they made robes, they did this. Well, we do a hell of a lot and, and, and our staff do a hell of a lot. So I do think it's, it's, it's something that we should be doing. Um, whether that is a full leaflet dropped through the town or wherever it may be, throughout, for the whole town, or whatever, but I do think we should be telling and putting it out loud and clear exactly what you're saying about what dear Ramsgate, uh, resident, this is what you get for your money from Ramsgate Ta- Town Council, and say it loud and clear. Um, because I, I do think the council does a fantastic job, Chair, but I fully support that.
Yeah, I think the problem is what medium do you use to actually promote this? We've done this before, we've had, um, I don't know, notices put up in notice boards and blah, 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 but still a lot of residents don't understand or appreciate what Ramsgate Town Council does. I know this from, I'm actually asking residents.
Yeah, Chair, if I can come back, I think, uh, I, I think notice boards and stuff, people don't read them.
No, no, it's...
Even leaflets through the door, most people don't read them, they just see it as trash and chuck it in the bin. So, um, the only way to norm- to normally get out would be, I, I would suggest, if we have the money, is to, is to try and, is to try and do like a radio advert. Something of that nature, not a TV one because of the cost, but a radio advert that goes out on local radio and, and, uh, and in around Kent that I, I think would be, would be worth, worthwhile. Some work's obviously got to go into that as to what we say, how we promote it. But I, I do think that's probably the best way, because people will, will hear that.
Okay. Any other thoughts or suggestions, members?
Um, you know, there's...
Piper?
Albin, can I speak, please?
Yeah, Councillor Linda Piper?
Um, could we, I, I agree with, uh, Councillor, um, Albin, I think, Albin, I think that's a good idea. How about having like an A4 leaflet of the things that we do and asking local takeaway places to have a small stash of them in their shops? Do you think Rebecca could, um, pave the way for that?
Well, it's, uh, she, we pay her quite handsomely to promote the town. Um, I'm sure that if you wanted her to do it, she would be duty-bound to do it.
Yeah, I mean, we could do, we could have...
It's not just the takeaways, it could be all other shops and bars and, when they reopen, of course. I mean, at the moment, we've been in complete lockdown, takeaway. But, uh, I think we need to look on the longer term for this. Perhaps sometime in the, uh, in the sort of spring and summer of next year would might be more appropriate now. I think we need to move forth through this Covid, if we can move through it, uh...
Because lots of our takeaways are encouraged to actually kind of take away and deliver. They could perhaps have a leaflet with them and could go out on each delivery.
It could do, yes. We can ask the town promoter to actually distribute them to those willing, uh, takeaway services.
Yes.
Good idea. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
Councillor Albin?
Who? Councillor Albin, go on.
Yes, I think, uh, Councillor Linda Piper is a very good idea. But I think recently Ramsgate Town Council is promoting, uh, so much through the social media, you know, Facebook and Twitter and also on the website. That's doing really very, very well. And, uh, our technicians, they all do excellent job, and especially Richard, I'd like to thank Richard for his work as well. And I think a leaflet of, you know, going through the takeaways as well as keeping it in the vic, you know? So people can actually pick it up and see what our council are doing.
I think you'd be surprised, Councillor Albin, how many people don't populate Facebook. You know, I should think nine out of ten of our residents don't populate Facebook. Anybody else?
Chair.
Councillor Green?
I would support, um, Councillor Albin's suggestion about radio.
Okay.
I, I understand there's a new Ramsgate radio starting up. We could well take advantage of that.
Okay, well, perhaps we could investigate that, town clerk, the new Ramsgate radio station?
Councillor Wing, Chair.
And if I...
One, hold on. Councillor Wing in a minute, yeah. Councillor Green?
I, I would support the, um, creating a corporate image through our vehicles and, uh,
Absolutely.
the, uh, the clothing that we provide to our technicians.
Okay.
As sort of a moving advert, so if people see them around doing things, they know exactly who they are and, and who's paying for it.
Okay. Councillor Wing?
I think Gemma, Gemma Dempsey, Ramsgate Radio, uh, town clerk, uh, lives on Spencer Square. I think she's, she's part of this Ramsgate radio that's setting up. But also, once we get events back up and running and hopefully a market, if we can find somebody to take over the market, what about every now and then having a presence on the market? Uh, we've done it with our litter, with the litter group, it's been really successful, because you can actually engage with the public. And it's a combination of, of maybe some town councillors and a couple of the workers, so that you can, you can also answer questions for locals as well.
Excellent idea. Hope you're right in all this town.
Yes.
What do you guys think? Okay, anybody else with ideas for the town clerk and deputy town clerk? Right, I think that covers the, uh, particular agenda item. And if we move on to the final one, town clerk's report. Oh, sorry.
Before you move on, there will be a cost for these things.
Okay, well, we can, we'll be finding out what the costs are, put it to the FNGP and we can allocate monies.
And a cost in staff's time, too.
Well, we're going to employ a new apprentice, he's going to be extremely busy, this new apprentice. Uh, I'm sure they're all sitting there filing their nails and combing, back combing their hair. Uh, so they have plenty of time to do this. Uh, okay, we move on to agenda item 13. If the costings for this particular previous item be brought forward to the FNGP, next FNGP meeting. Agenda item 13, town clerk's report, including an agenda item for Councillor, uh, Green and his adoption of a 20 mile an hour area. Right. Town clerk, first.
Uh, yeah, I, I, in terms of the 20 mile an hour...
We can't see you at all now, just the top of your hair.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, damn it, it's horrible. Go back to the top of the hair.
The, the 20 mile an hour limit, um, uh, in the highways, um, improvement plan that we put to, to the county council, which they asked for, we put, I didn't put too many in there, but there was one in particular, which is, which is Effingham Street. It, as you know, is very narrow. Um, and not only did I suggest to them, or through you, and I suggested to them that the, that Effingham Street receives a 20 mile an hour limit, because it is, there are traffic speeding down there at quite, quite a rate, that it also becomes one-way, and it should become one-way upwards and not downwards. Uh, and, but there are many other websites, very similar in sight, but especially in the Georgian squares, where 20 mile an hour limit would seem to be, um, a sensible thing to do. We were never included on this latest, um, uh, this latest scheme that, that, that Margate had various different sites, um, allocated for a 20 mile an hour limit, and there were no consultations at all about it. Um, I, I, I find that somewhat odd, to say the very least.
As KCC is so compliant with our requests, uh, we need, I think, as you say, we need to request the KCC, uh, their agreement that to turn various areas, particularly Effingham Street, into a 20 mile an hour and one-way system, and how to include that into the system. Right. Councillor Green, your proposal for a 20 mile an hour? Okay, Councillor McInneson, got you?
KCC has a, has a policy of adopting 20 mile an hour schemes on residential roads.
Good.
Across the county. Uh, a number of towns in, in, in the county, um, have, have adopted this as policy. Faversham, for instance, uh, Broadstairs has, has just adopted it. Um, so much further down the road than others, um, I'm suggesting that, uh, Ramsgate does the same, has the same policy for purely residential roads.
Okay.
Now, obviously, that there are costs involved in this in terms of consultation and, um, signage.
Signage, yeah.
So if we can't do it all straight away for the complete town, I've consulted in the Nethercourt Board.
Yeah.
And, uh, the residents were presented with a list of, and, and suggested things that would improve the ward. By far the most popular was adopting the 20 mile an hour, um, limit. The second one with trees. Uh, but Nethercourt Ward is particularly suitable for this, because there are only two exit entrances into the estate, so it shouldn't cost a lot of money. And, and, and it could be, um, controlled by means of, uh, the, the residence group running one of these, um, SID, uh, speed indicator devices occasionally. Uh, which is the other thing that KCC, um, are concerned about in adopting these schemes. So what I'm suggesting is that we find out from KCC precisely what they need in order to agree to the adoption of a 20 mile an hour scheme.
So when you say you're suggesting, you mean you're proposing?
I'm proposing and taking it.
I'll second that. Right, Councillor McInneson wanted to speak.
Um, just to say, I don't think, this is entirely self-interested. I don't think it should just be residential roads. I think it should be the whole of the centre of Ramsgate. Because, I mean, for example, where I live, there are thousands, tens or hundreds of schoolchildren crossing the road every day between the two branches of the grammar school. And there are very, very narrow pavements. And because it's a bit of a straight road, people just put their foot down and go up Chatham Street. I, I don't think it should just be confined to residential roads, which are usually controlled by car parking and making it very difficult for people to speed in some of the residential roads.
The problem is. If you, if you don't limit it to residential roads, then it falls foul of roads like Canterbury East and Canterbury Road, which are main thoroughfares in and out of the town, yeah?
Well, that's got a forty mile an hour limit, which you could.
Yes, I appreciate that, but the reality is that the proposal, unless you limit it to residential roads, which are designated in the KCC uh highway plan, then you fall foul of, well, you can't have it because it would mean twenty miles an hour in certain roads which are regarded as arterial roads.
Well, they, they need to look at roads individually then to.
Well, they won't. No, no, see, the problem is they won't do that. It's a massive, massive task and I haven't got the people power to do it.
Do it, well.
Fall into a trap of failing the system completely.
Well.
Anyone wish to speak on this particular item?
I mean, if, if the, um, if the road has a school in it, is that a residential road?
Well, you could include roads that, well, they're, I don't know.
This is what I mean.
I don't.
Um, we did have a meeting with, with some of the people, the KCC people and Karen Constantine. Well, we talked about uh speed limits outside schools.
Outside schools, but nothing has happened, has it? The problem is nothing has happened.
No, nothing has happened.
So we need to move forward. Even if we move forward with this particular proposal, which is residential streets in Nethercourt as a, if you like, a testing area, we can see how it works. Get the community to actually use the Sid device and KCCRs and we can actually expand the actual programme to other parts of Ramsgate. But let's start somewhere, at least. At least then we've got somewhere where we've got a twenty mile an hour speed limit and we can build upon that. Otherwise, we've got nothing.
And the other thing is, they have to enforce it.
Well, this is the enforcement. The part is that the community group in Nethercourt are prepared to take on that enforcement role. That's the point that councillor Green has made.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on this?
I struggle.
Councillor Wing, Chair.
Councillor Wing?
We, we made, we made some proposals. I, I think uh that the, the town clerk, Richard, asked us months ago to give us streets in our ward that we were concerned about. And I, I can remember firing off a long list, Addington Street. The whole approach from Westcliff to Eastcliff, I believe, should be twenty miles an hour all the time. Uh, Westcliff Road, you know, this, this streets, there's problematic streets all over the place.
There are.
Uh, so I, I'd like to know what happened to all those proposals that I gave as a ward councillor some months back. They seemed to have been totally ignored. But yes, I would support a trial in a, in a small area that we can manage. But let's find out what we want from KCC, which I think is what, what councillor Green is proposing. And then let's find out where the issues, well, we all know where the issues are in our own wards and across Ramsgate. But, you know, I'd like to see a town-wide twenty mile an hour scheme. You don't need to drive fast when you're, when you're in the town.
I appreciate that and I support that. But the proposal from councillor Green has been seconded is that we have a pilot in Nethercourt Ward, yeah? Which will be enforced and monitored by the Nethercourt Community Association with a Sid device on appropriate occasions. That's the proposal at the moment on the table. All those opposed to that, please speak now. Then that's unanimously passed. Can you inform KCC that we'd like to propose this and move forward with this? And the town council would need to buy a suitable Sid device, if granted by KCC to implement it, to the resident association of uh um Nethercourt.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I also propose on another agenda item in, in this town's clerk report? There's going to be a lockdown now for a month. Uh, Custom House, um, the cafe will be still working as a takeaway, so they'll have an income. The R and L I won't. I propose that for a month, we give them a rent-free month whilst the lockdown is in.
Second that, Chair.
That's why councillor Green, is there anybody wish to speak on it? Anybody opposed to it? That's unanimous. Would you inform the R and L I that we are going to give them a month's free rent whilst lockdown is in place?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, that concludes this meeting.